...number nineteen, and we are here in the great hall. If you'll all stand and join me in moment of silence. And if you'll please join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person being in audio or video recording of this public meeting may put a committee through a meeting. Attendees have therefore advised that such recordings were transmitted not being made, where the proceeds were unperceived by those present, and that due to knowledge impermissible.
Great, thank you. And I did miss the calling of the roll, Madam Clerk, sorry about that. So, we'll mark everybody here. We'll have a roll. Thanks.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Crowell.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Fink.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor McCarth.
Present.
Counselor Pahmouchi.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Present.
Seven members.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this time, I'd like to call forth Counselor Devanna, who has a commendation this evening. Counselor Devanna?
Thank you, President Hughes. It is an honor and purpose to stand up here tonight as the Veterans Council, Veterans Services Chairman of the City Council, as well as the Junior Vice Commander of the Sons of America Legion Marsete Post Squadron 294. You know, back in 2012, I joined the Sons in honor of my dad Russ of Honor, Vietnam Veteran, that served in the U.S. Air Force for twenty-three years, and my grandpa Tommy of World War II, Veteran, USAID. Tonight, we're here to recognize the Sons of American Legion Marsete Post 294 with Commander Paul Moody, for the sixth year anniversary of the Flags of Veterans Island at Fort Square. You know, in memory of one of the founders of this island, as well as the founders of the Sons of American Legion Marsete Post 294, is we wanted to make a memory tonight for Richard Dick Fisit Floyd, and I know he's looking down here, looking down at the sun and saying, "That island's really flourish." Here tonight with Commander Moody is our chapter of Joe McDonald, and you guys come on back here as well. Judge Advocate Mike Norton, Walter Hubley, and the original Sons founder in 2003, Stephen Pauls, and Walter Hubley as well. These are part of the Sons of American Legion, or the Marsete Post. Some notable Sons that weren't able to make it here tonight is the Adjutant Robert LaFleur, Senior Vice Commander Joe Brill, Sergeant at Arms George Bouchard, George Nicholson, which was also Director of Veterans Services here in the city of Quincy, Astoria Bob Lewis, Finance Officer Guy Ferris. I'd also like to recognize in the establishment here tonight Ward Four Counselor Brian Pahmouchi, which is part of the Sons as well. Thank you, Brian, for all your services as well with us. Former Ward Three Counselor Kevin Cottle, and our Quincy Sun publisher and editor, Bob Bosworth, is also a Son. Back in 2010, the island was formed with ten flags. Today, four hundred flags are recognized for living deceased veterans. The Flag for Veterans Island has grown with a walkway to the flagpole with now three hundred and ninety-three bricks, as well as benches and tree lighting ceremonies during Christmas holiday. There are two main ceremonies each year for the island, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. With the help of the North Quincy High School Junior ROTC and other volunteers, the Sons put up the flags a few weeks before Memorial Day, and they stay up until the weekend after the Fourth of July. Then around Columbus Day, the flags are put back up for Veterans Day, which is coming around pretty soon. And during these weeks, it is sight to see at the Flags of Veterans Island. Also, I'd like to thank Mayor Thomas Coe for all his help with allowing this island to flourish and having our veterans honored and remembered in the city of Quincy. Here's this, I'd like to read it to our Commander Paul Moody. The Sons of American, this Quincy City Council presented, present to the Sons of American Legion Marsete Post Squadron 294. In recognition and appreciation of the six-year anniversary of the Flags of Veterans Island, we applaud you for the efforts in recognizing and honoring the city's veterans with this beautiful and moving patriotic tribute. This tribute is to all that serve, still serve, who paid the ultimate sacrifice, from all branches of the military to truly awe-inspiring. We thank you for your service to our country and command you for the dedication to our fellow veterans, signed by the entire City Council. And so, Paul Moody, our Commander, would you like to say anything?
No, there's not much more I can say if you have a heart to say something.
Counselor Devanna's like, "Come on."
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Counselor and President Hughes for all her time as the Veterans Services Chairperson before I came on for four years of the degree. Fantastic job. So, thank you, President Hughes. If we could, if there's anybody else that wants to say anything? Here's enough. If we could, we take a quick recess.
Our love goes to you guys.
We could. I'd just like to say something, and thank you, Counselor Devanna, for your kind words about my time in the Veterans Council. It was an honor to serve these wonderful men and women at the Marsete Post and the other posts, and I know that the posts are in a funny time, where it's difficult to find new members. I know the younger folks coming back are not as active in their posts, and at this time, I'd just like to encourage those returning veterans or younger veterans to come in, to join their posts, to join the Veterans groups, because this group that you see behind you is just an example of some wonderful men, but time moves on, and they need younger blood to get in there and really do the work, get out and do the flags, and get out and, you know, I'm grateful to folks like Counselor Devanna and other folks who have joined at the post, who are able to carry that mantle for the next twenty, the next thirty years that these gentlemen and women have done in their service and capacities. So, it's a great honor, and the island of flags is so impressive. If folks watching at home haven't had a chance to drive by there when the flag's on display, it's very humbling and very moving. So, at this time, does anyone, yes, Counselor Pahmouchi?
Thank you, President Hughes. I just echo the comments that Counselor Devanna and Counselor Hughes made. You guys do a fantastic job. Really thank you for all your work and all your service, not just to the city, but for the country. And Mr. Moody, just the amount of work that you've put in and what you've created out of nothing is just, it really is truly amazing. And I just wanted to reflect upon my own personal experience in going to the ceremonies. I started going to ceremonies before I had a family, a daughter, before I had any children. And for the past two years, I've brought my daughter by, and it was three and a half. It's been a great opportunity to start a conversation, because kids love the flag island. Every time you drive by, I'm sure it's, "I'm not the only car driving by it whose child is in the back pointing it out, getting very excited by it." And so, when I brought my daughter to that ceremony, it allows us, I mean, she's three, but it allows us to start that conversation about service and about what it means and the symbolism of the flag and the service of the folks that each one of those flags at that island represent. I know last year, Counselor Crowell as well brought his son there, and it's not only a fine tribute to the folks who are represented there, but it's also putting forward that notion of service and sacrifice to younger people, which is so important in helping shape our community and our country moving forward. So, thank you again, all of you, for the work you do in making this such a great success and such a wonderful, wonderful thing to happen in our city. And then just a personal thank you to Mr. Moody for not ever reporting me to the Quincy Sun like dues are late.
I think you're gonna have to do this yet.
Yeah. I was gonna see if I had a check on my clock, but thank you very much.
Do you ever have cash?
Yeah.
Great. Well, at this time, we'll recess for a picture, and thank you. We'll recess.
Can you take one?
I can.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, do you want to do that?
Thank you.
This one?
Yeah.
I can take one for him.
Ready?
Yeah, come on.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'll come up.
Mine's crazy lately.
I was supposed to see that yesterday.
The clock.
Oh, my.
Ms. Bob Newlock says, "You can't see the camera?" The camera can't see you.
No, you're, you're, who's you? Just a "hoo!" Men stand close to the guard. Mountain high, mountain wide, mountain be.
Amen.
It's all the way.
Come on in, Scott.
Hold on, I want to.
All right.
Yes, we're good.
Oh, good stuff.
He's got scrotums in there.
Maybe just a little.
Nina, I can't see you.
It's probably a good time.
Thank you.
Good Scott.
All right.
You got a batango once.
Yeah, good.
Congratulations.
All right.
We're back on the record, as it were, and Madam Clerk, if you'll call first agenda item.
Number one on the agenda. A big presentation on 2006, the United States of America, sixty-eight, was all taken report of the city's efforts to control the ratting of birds and the Health Commission, Commissioner Shaly, and the mayor's representative, Chris Walker.
Great. So, thank you, Commissioner Shaly, for attending this evening, and I'm gonna hand it over to the mayor representative, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Madam President, for your time. Before the Commissioner gives the council report on his work and that department's work and the city's work relative to this issue, I just wanted to highlight something that we communicated with the body, the mayor did, last week, and it's been in the press relative to potential change in how the city collects its trash. We expect a report you within the next week, several weeks, months, over the money it takes, with a formal proposal to really dramatically change the way that we collect trash and recycling in the city, as an effort to dramatically increase recycling and answer some of these quality of life issues. This is something this body, the number of members I mentioned, by providing standardized barrels for both recycling and trash removal. This isn't the driving factor, it's not rodent issues, but it's certainly going to add to the work that we're doing. It eliminates a major food source. As the Commissioner will tell you, one of the issues that we have is barrels that are uncovered, plastic bags that are left on the other side. And this is a major food source for rodents, rats, and any other kind of term that needs a meal. So, it's one tool in a toolbox, and we're going to be coming forward with you and hopefully working with everyone. Until now, at the time we issued a formal proposal, soliciting ideas, we're just out now, soliciting some feedback. There's been a lot already. We plan to continue to do that, working with individual councils and getting all their thoughts prior to a formal proposal being placed before this body's review. If I could, Madam President, get back to the Health Commission.
Of course.
Could I go on the resolution?
Counselor Fink.
Yes, this is Counselor Kane and I's resolution. Couldn't be here tonight, but I told him I'd speak on behalf of him as well. We filed this last budget time during an uptick in calls about rats in the neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods. Not sure of any rodents. I've never gotten a call about any rodents, which Mr. Walker refers to. Just the rats is really the problem.
A lot of varmints.
Like squirrels.
Yeah. No, not a lot of, it's really just the rats is the issue. But in this summer, Counselor Kane and I had been talking, and we didn't see a decrease in the calls, about the calls and the emails about rats. It was pretty steady between the two of us. I don't know what other board councils have experienced. So, we thought it would make sense if we could put this on in one of the first meetings that we had, just to get an update. I know that obviously the mayor's trash plan, however long it takes, that would be a good thing moving forward. Also, I know that the, we had put some additional money into the budget, to the Health Department budget, to address this issue, and that the city has been making progress. So, I just really wanted to put it on tonight so that we could get an update from Drew as to what the city's been doing. And I guess Drew, you know, I said this earlier, too, just looking for where we're at in terms of where we were in the number of calls, and I think you had said you mapped out the calls to see if you've seen any patterns. Obviously, we're, you know, maybe six months since we made the budget hearings, five or six months, so it's some more time, some more data points to look at in terms of what's happening up there, and to discuss the effectiveness of what you guys have been doing in the interim. So, that's really what I was looking for, the purpose of bringing this forward today.
So, again, the mayor put additional monies into my budget this year to aggressively combat the rat issue that has been plaguing the city for about the last year or so. Last year, fiscal year from July 2015 until June 2016, we received a hundred complaints, and we've, not a hundred complaints, we received hundreds of complaints, but we baited a hundred private properties for rats. And this passed from this July and August, we've already baited sixty properties. But on the good side, because we have aggressively been going out to the different neighborhoods and baiting these properties, part of it is because we've done such a great job of making sure that the public knows that the service is available, and we can go out there and walk their properties and give them some reassurance. There's a lot of the calls we go out on, they're, they may have seen a rat go by, or they thought they saw something, and they just wanted some reassurance from my office that there are no burrows on their property, and they haven't seen anything. So, we've gone out and we've done that, but we've also aggressively baited areas. The Marstly area was an area that we received many, many complaints, and areas of Ward Four, up on the other side of the expressway, where we received a lot of different complaints. And again, I attribute this still to that real bad, bad winter that we had a few years, a year and a half ago. So, when you have ninety days of bait stations not being treated, that gives the rats a huge opportunity to reproduce, jump into the sewer systems, come out, find additional new food sources, and burrow. So, as Mr. Walker said, the barrels is a small piece, that's going to eliminate a food source for the rats. We've also gone out and we've had the flyers that I gave out at the very, very beginning of the budget season. We've been handing those out to all the different neighborhoods, and we go out and we get a complaint, and we go out and talk to the neighbors. I've also talked with neighbors because of the public relations job that we've done of telling people what they can do and how they can eliminate rats on their own, that I was talking to a gentleman last night that said he actually had a little neighborhood meeting of his own with five neighbors. They'd seen a couple of rats, and this is about three months ago, and they all found out that they had something that was attracting the rats. One of them was, had a bird feeder. Another one left food out for stray cats, stray animals. Another one had a whole bunch of pallets in the back of the yard that were piled up high, so that was a place for them to live. All they needed was less than an ounce of water to survive for a day, so it was a great opportunity for them to be there. They eliminated all of those problems, all of those things that attracted rats. I was talking with them last night, he hasn't seen a rat in two months. As I said, we've had already sixty calls this year that we've actually gone out and physically baited a property. So far, it's September nineteenth, I think, twentieth today, and we've had eight calls in September. So, the calls dramatically coming down compared to, we had thirty-seven in July, in June, and thirty-nine in July of this year. We had twenty-one in August of this year, and right now, as we're into, you know, September twentieth, we have eight. So, we have been going out there, we've aggressively been baiting. We did talk about different methods to do it. I know New York City has used dry ice, and they've been baiting for, they've given them a pill that made, or a fee that made the female stealth, so that they couldn't produce any more offspring. We didn't go that route, we kind of felt, and I felt the same way, and I've talked with a couple of different exterminators, and they all suggest, recommend, just bait. You have to find the burrows, eliminate the food source, eliminate the water, and that's the approach that we've been taking to help the house. So, I'll take any questions or comments or...
The calls that you've seen, are they, the drop off in calls, is that consistent with last year? Because I think, I recall you saying, "The less people are outside, out and about," the less they're gonna see the rats, the less they're gonna call.
So, this September, we have eight calls so far. Last September, we had four. We had three calls last August and six calls last July. This year, once we, people knew that we had these funds available, we had an uptick, you know, so we had thirty-nine calls this July, and again, twenty-one. So, we are going in the right direction from this. I imagine after tonight, I'll get an uptick in calls, which is absolutely fine, I have no problem, you know.
There's this, this argument or this theory that the more we talk about it, the more people report it.
The, yeah, no, not, not report it. Some people call just because they just want us to come out if they know we're gonna be baiting. Well, if they're gonna bait, come on out and check my property.
Without having any rats.
Without having any rats. They may, they may have seen, maybe they thought they saw one, maybe it was a sick-looking squirrel that had a bad tail that they might have...
Some other type of one.
Yeah. But again, I am thrilled to be up here talking about it. The more we talk about it, the more people know that there is an issue out there, and my office is here to help them any way they can.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad to see that, you know, we're, we're being, as a city, we're being more aggressive about it. That, you can't stress enough, and not that you need convincing here, but that it's such a quality of life issue that really, you know, if you see a rat in your yard, but you try to enjoy your backyard, or, you know, children, and they're all playing, and you see a rat alive or dead, that is your number one quality of life issue. It's no longer the puddle in front of your, in front of your house or the street that needs to be repaved. It immediately becomes that because it's, you know, got this icky feeling to it, right itself. So, I think that's why it's so important to invest in this and to really get after it. In terms of working with others in the community, so we're talking about residents, what about business, restaurants? Are we doing anything in terms of programming towards them to help tamp that down, or are they already in good, you know, good food?
The restaurants have always been required to have pest control companies come in on a regular basis. We require that any dumpster area in all of the restaurants have a bait box that's maintained on a regular basis. My inspectors know that that's a number one priority when they go out and they do restaurant inspection. I want them to make sure that, yes, there is a bait box out there, and it is being serviced. It's not out there from three years ago because a pest control company put it out there and they haven't baited it yet. I actually have a key on my key ring that allows me to go in and open up a bait box to look to see if there is anything in there. So, we'll never get rid of all of the rats in the city. This is their natural environment, they thrive in an urban area, but we can definitely control them where they're not going to be coming up into neighborhoods and looking for food.
Yeah, and along those lines, again, with partners, the MBTA, I've worked with them in the past, I think it may have been last year or the year before, about Quincy Adams Station, and somebody who actually was a Quincy resident, West Quincy resident, had something to do with facilities, maybe someone went out there and said, "Yeah, there's some things we can definitely do to improve, picking up trash more often." You know, they had barrels that were overflowing, and obviously that was creating a food source, and I think they've done a good job, and overall, throughout the city, have we been working with the MBTA, have we checked the stations, what's the status?
We work with the MBTA, we've called them on several different occasions over the last couple of months. We've been down in Raver, Federal Ave, and there have been some burrows down there that they've baited for us. Up by Holm Street in the back there, along the MBTA tracks, they've been, we've been contacting them there. Holm Street, we had a real problem for about a month or so, and we were down there just about three days a week baiting, probably about eight or nine different homes right down there. So, we have finished down in that area, and the MBTA was very, very helpful on that end of it, and also when you go over to the North Quincy parking garage in back of McDonald's and the North Quincy Fire Station, we've had them bait in that area too.
And then just, you know, last thing. Do you think we're in good, in a good posture at this point, looking forward to a lower population next spring, or is there additional things that you need to be doing or things that we can do?
I think we're gonna continue to go out progressively, try to identify burrows, food sources, and harbors areas that they're gonna be living in. As long as we can stay on top of that, I think we'll see a real decrease come next year.
Now, do you, do you work with, with inspectional services? If you're going out to an area because there's a report of rats, and you see this obvious violation of, well, I guess you can find for health compliance, right? No, I don't find.
But when we do work with inspectional services, if there is any type of demolition going on, knocking down a building, prior to the knockdown, we require that the area is baited for ten days prior to, and that the area remains baited until the entire project is complete ten days after. So, once the project is shut down ten days later, then they can come back and remove the bait boxes. I've actually gone by a couple of different work sites and have not seen any bait boxes, and all I have to do is call Director Duka, and he puts a call in to whoever the foreman is on the job, and the next day, there are bait stations there. So, we work very well with them.
That's good. I wasn't thinking that scenario, which it's good to think of that. I was thinking more like a blighted property, where you go and one neighbor's complaining, and then you got the property next door that has grass, as Counselor Forrest very concerned, the grass is, you know, two feet high. You know, what, what are we doing in terms of identifying?
There's been probably two or three blighted properties that we've actually baited, because we've identified burrows on the property. If we identify that it could be a possible run, and you have a constituent that says, you know, "I've seen the rats come out five, six different times out of the side of the house over there," we've baited to be proactive. Even if we haven't identified burrows, maybe they're coming out of the house some other way, that's just their spot. But we have baited, and we've baited a couple of properties down in Ward One.
And so, based on my limited knowledge of rat behavior, will they come back? So, you bait them now, so you bait them now, right? You bait a blighted property that someone reports, Counselor Forrest calls you and says this, this issue over here, you go, you bait it, you take care of it. It's good now, you know, it's September nineteenth, it's good now, good through the winter, but are those rats, are rats going to come back and find that property again in the spring?
If there's a good food source and a good water source, if there are enough rats that are looking for a place to go, I can't say no, but I mean, there's a good possibility that they could come back. Out of all of the calls that we've had over the last, you know, three or four months, we've probably, we only had two or three repeat calls. We just got our first repeat call today for a property down on Newport Ave that we're gonna be going back to.
Call Pine, 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 Pine,
But we have baited, and we've baited a couple of properties down in Ward One.
And so, based on my limited knowledge of rat behavior, will they come back? So you bait them now, so you bait them now, right? You bait a blighted property that someone reports, Councilor Forrest calls you and says, this issue over here. You go, you bait it, you take care of it. It's good now, you know, it's September nineteenth, it's good now, good through the winter. But are those rats, are rats going to come back and find that property again in the spring?
If there's a good food source and a good water source, if there are enough rats that are looking for a place to go, I can't say no, but I mean, there's a good possibility that they could come back. Out of all of the calls that we've had over the last, you know, three or four months, we've probably only had two or three repeat calls. We just got our first repeat call today for a property down on Newport Ave that we're gonna be going back to.
Call Pine, 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 Pine is the number thirty-five, thirty-seven.
Thank you, appreciate that, a little applause. And in those instances, are you able to identify what the permanent source of the issue is?
It could be anything, it could be, they could have a garden, and some of the manure that is used in some of the gardens, especially if you wanna grow a zucchini, they use a very rich, rich manure. And the rats eat feces, so they're not going after the vegetables, they're going after the manure that's used to make the vegetables that much bigger.
All right, well, thank you very much, Drew, I appreciate you coming up here, giving us an update and all the work you're in the department. Two addresses. Thank you, Councilor President Hughes.
Councilor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President, Councilwoman Chieh Perketya. Of course, I was gonna go right into this blighted property, it's really been a chronic problem, and some of the abandoned properties. Drew, I could start out with thanking you for your responsiveness. I've called you a few times at five o'clock on Friday, it's closing time, New York Day. You've really gone down to constituents' houses and been so responsive, so that's something that myself, my constituents, are very appreciative of, you know, to it. A few of the incidents, the rat boss that come to me, have been from abandoned properties. And you're able to allow those properties, bait those properties, even when homeowners are not responsive?
Yeah, well, on a blighted property that is an abandoned property, we'll go on there and bait.
Okay. And what's interesting that I just heard, and I know a lot of times when we're doing permitting, we're talking about pest control, but on a demo permit, so the blighted property, one in particular, you baited, was Orange County Street House, and it's scheduled for demolition. So part of their demo permit application requires them to do what specifically? So they need, and that's an area we've identified, because having burrows, the city has gone on, the city has baited, the homeowner is finally answering phone calls, scheduling demolition. Prior to these demo permits, to then bait that property, keep that property baited ten days.
Yes, ten days prior until ten days after the project is completed.
And that's a standard on all demolition. And what about, I know Councilwoman Chieh is only seeing rats in Ward Four, but we've had the squirrels in that house, there's records in that house, in particular to the, to the, in particular to the blighted properties. And I guess I just wanna talk about what, walk me through that, right? So a lot of times, hey, blighted property, it's inspectional services, and that, you know, it's just kind of in the loop of, you know, chronic problem, unresponsive, can't take them every day. But when there's load is going to get out of the house, it triggers a health code violation and gets you a involvement. So I guess, what then is being able to be done to eradicate the other problem?
This, the, all I can do is get in touch with Mr. Duka and have the house sealed, secured. As far as if there's an opening up on one of the rafters that a squirrel can get into, it's really not a lot I can do at this particular moment. My hands are kind of tied with that, I don't have the funds to go in and order properties out of the funds to go in and mow people's lawns if it's overgrown or anything like that.
Squirrels are loved at my house.
There's stagnant, you know, lots of stagnant water, there's a tar, there's a body of plastic, a tar in the backyard. But the city's really, there aren't many tools we have to help resolve these issues when the homeowner is ignoring the conditions.
If it's an occupied home, Mr. Duka's office has the ability to find them, that usually gets their attention. If it's abandoned property, it's...
Well, let's go with unoccupied, it's just that the taxpayer might be paid, right? There's someone acknowledging that they own the property, so if it's unoccupied.
If it's unoccupied, then Mr. Duka would still be able, as long as you have contact with an owner, Mr. Duka will be able to go in and find them, and then that's what gets them going.
You would think.
I know.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Forrest, Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, and Commissioner, thank you for what you've done for Ward Six. You've responded every time I've called you, and the call's a lesson. And that means that what you're doing, you're doing right. I have to thank you, I had my first community meeting last summer, and you came out and you spoke and educated. That's really a big thing that we have to do is educate folks and, you know, I'm gonna be having some more...
More than happy to come on in.
Exactly, and that's important because folks don't realize, as was mentioned, you know, the dog, folks who bought their dogs that don't have a plastic bag in their market, and not picking up, picking up the feces, you know, they're just, they're not helping matters, the folks who aren't putting their gardens in a barrel, they're not helping matters. I applaud the folks who are looking to, you know, the passage that's gonna come up with barrels. I think, I think it's a great thing. I've had some opposition from some landlords that don't want the barrel situation replaced, but it's not gonna get better unless we, you know, educate the folks, cut off that food source. And again, yourself and Jay Duker, you folks have responded to Ward Six. And we're gonna continue to, you know, fight this, and I think it's gonna be a thing of the past. Something to laugh about, hopefully, within the next...
Six months.
Absolutely, and thanks for everything you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Shealy, good evening, welcome, nice to see you. At the expense of sort of reiterating everything that is said, was said, I just wanna thank you on behalf of Ward Two. You know, being a Ward Council, I really challenge myself to have a, you know, high level of service when it comes to a constituent, you know, service model. Guys like you, Councilor Harris, and mentioned Jay Duker, and a poor host of our department, as you made that, you know, that become a reality. And within the last month or so, we were dealing with an issue at a residence home. You know, I referred you as, you found me, you know, you called my cell phone, gave her your cell phone, and we called you. Literally, you were down on her property with baited traps. All honesty, I think you made her, her mom, you know, she was that, that happy. You know, it's a good reflection on the city, no question. I guess what I'm trying, maybe a teachable moment here from you to me. As we obviously see development taking place throughout the city, I know that part of it, part of the overall package, lack of better word, it comes a road into our pest control plan. How robust, I don't think I've actually seen one of those, but how robust is that plan from a development standpoint? Are they investing thousands of dollars, do they get that potential around there on...
Just a project in general?
It depends upon the size of the project.
Sure.
I mean, the Wendy's down on Newport Ave, we require that they had a bait box, I think it was like maybe thirty feet around the correct. So depends upon the size of the project as to how much it's gonna cost.
I mean, now, is there like certain things that, you know, Ward Councilors can be doing to sort of create that additional backup for the neighborhood, to preemptively deal with, I mean, basically...
If they see something, have them call.
Right, putting in from the developers, saying, well, like a pre-composition.
For the most part, we require that all the developers, we do require it right now, that they, they have to submit to us a noise control plan, a dust control plan, and a pest control plan. And that gets reviewed by my office.
And that's, those are...
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand, what that...
That seems to be working very well right now.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
All right, great, Councilor Devon.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Shealy, you're doing a fantastic job. Every email or call I get, they say you're a quick response, you're on top of it, you get right out there, and you do a great job. But they may still say, well, sometimes I'm mitigating this, I'm getting over this rat situation, sometimes I'm not. With that said, is there, I'm only gonna get too graphic, is there any other animals out there that may eat these rats or mitigate these rats that you can...
Coyotes, falcons, fox, apes.
Definitely. So all three of them, have you seen them?
It's funny, I haven't had any calls for rats out there recently, and I imagine that's because of the coyotes that are out there.
So you see a difference in where the animals are checked, they've been, and for red flags, when you go onto these sites where you're getting these calls, have you seen any red flags or that, is there, do you see these?
Sometimes it's through no fault of the, most of the times, it's through no fault of the homeowner or not. They, they may not even know that they have a water source on their property. They have a frisbee in the backyard that's been upside down and told, you know, a cup of water, and that cup of water can be there for five or six days. Well, that's a food source for that rat. He might not even live on that property, he might be borrowing in a property over, but that's his water source. So we try to eliminate as many different things on someone's property as we can and put a trash...
How often are you seeing repeat calls? Do you have to come back out to that property?
Probably, probably only about two or three right now.
Okay, and do you see clusters? Say you say, I've got a call on Fort Zill Road, right in the middle area, are you getting any other areas around that on the street?
You know, what happens is we love that, we will knock on the doors of the houses on either side, front and back and around. So we kind of form a perimeter around the property. And make sure that we, you know, educate all the people. We were down in the back of, off of, trying to think of a place, I wanna say the guy's name, but I don't wanna say his name.
Yeah, please don't name the names.
Yeah, I'm not, but again, it's all about education, it's all about talking to neighbors, it's all about trying to help neighbors understand what they can do to mitigate the problems that they don't have. And we're always helping them.
Do you think this barrel system, if we go and push this forward by the, through the mayor and the city council, do you think that'll make a difference in the city?
Make a difference.
What do you think in percentage-wise, if I could put a number on it?
I think we're eliminating a major food source, though.
Sure, by having a barrel, I've got a close hotline. I also wanna thank, if I could, through President Hughes's, thank you to Mr. Walker and the administration for moving and having a discussion eventually about the barrel system, which goes hand-in-hand with you, and we can all work together on mitigating the situation with the rat situation here. I'm optimistic that these numbers will go down, but you never know when another spike... Talking about getting into infrastructure here, we're gonna be putting, I've talked to planning, Mr. Fatsy, we're gonna be putting twenty-five hundred more units coming in and getting more into the infrastructure, into the ground, and maybe disrupting their little burrows, I guess you could call them, and having coming out more. So I think it's, the ballot system, in my personal opinion, is an investment and not an expense. I think down the road, with, as well as the recycling, we're gonna save in the long run, mitigating rats, the investment.
I was talking to a gentleman last night, and he did not know that we were gonna be going to the, or that the barrel system's gonna be coming up. And his wife said they have one of the little blue bins, and she said, I'm gonna triple my recycling if I have one of those barrels. Because right now, I don't wanna put everything into the bin, because when I put it out on a windy day, it's going down the street. But if I have a ninety-six gallon recycling container, I'm gonna recycle everything, she can't wait to get it. So I think, I think it's gonna be a cost saving deal.
And you were just talking about educating the public about the rats. We're educating the public about the recycling. I mean, that ninety-six gallon, it costs upwards eighty to a hundred dollars. That'll be given to you, you'll put more recyclables, you'll have less trash, you'll save the city and us with taxpayer money. So I wanna thank you for your time, coming in here tonight, all that you do, and you can keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes.
Oh, no, 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 not for the public, no, sorry.
Oh, I want a proposal, to get some money, to invest money, to put a diet on the Prince Corrus, and another L Street on our shores.
There you go, okay. So thank you, Commissioner Shealy, as always, next item here at the Atlantic City Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Madam President.
Two thousand sixteen, two-two-seven, appropriation, the other name...
Read the reading, Madam President, because that's going to go to the Finance Committee.
Okay, for the finance.
And you brought up, next, Commissioner Ramon, he is here, was ready to present. You know, we referred to the committee, and the assumption will be here more about the housing plan this evening. So I just wanted to make that known, that Commissioner Ramon was ready to present, but we'll pick that up on Saturday.
Okay, thank you, and we appreciate you being here, Commissioner, thank you. All right, so the next item, Madam President.
On the Freedom Agenda, two thousand six-eight, approval of the Quincy Housing Production Plan.
Motion away the reading.
Wait, the reading, that's also going to go to committee.
For finance?
You note to housing.
Oh, to housing, great.
The gentleman from the MAPC was going to be present to make a presentation this evening, however, something came up on a conflict in schedule. But Rob Malat, did you want to say something, I thought that planner Fatsy's... Good?
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Rob.
Good evening, Madam President, Councilor, good evening. My name is Robert Malat, I'm a principal planner for the city in the Planning and Community Development Department. I'll speak briefly on the housing production plan, and Councilor, as you mentioned, will be referred to committee potentially. So the housing production plan is the city's five-year proactive strategy to both plan for and produce affordable workforce housing to meet the city's housing needs, and doing so in a manner consistent with Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty-B and the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development Regulations. It's also known as the Confiscant Amendment Law. So this legislation, the state legislation, encourages municipalities to achieve ten percent of their total year-round housing units to be decent affordable housing to low and moderate income households. Quincy is currently at nine point six percent. Communities with approved housing production plans may request state certification of their compliance with the plan if it meets its affordable housing production goals. And municipality with a state-certified plan, a decision of the zoning board appeals can deny what's called a Confiscant Amendment application, and that denial will be consistent with local needs if it is ever appealed at the state housing appeals. There are many other practical advantages for the city to create and adopt the housing production plan. It provides an opportunity to understand housing conditions and to determine the projected housing needs of the current population, its growth, and its change in composition over time. So for example, are there enough starter homes for those new, reforming households? Is there adequate workforce housing? What are the options for a growing number of empty nesters and baby rooms? Are the needs of the elderly and the frail elderly being met? Are there options for both rental and homeownership? Production plan also reviews the amount, type, and edition of the city's existing housing stock to determine if there is a sufficient supply to meet those projected housing demands and the preferences for the years ahead. So the housing production plan will address these questions and also outline the rules and strategies that, if adopted, will serve as the city's guide in continuing to create and preserve a diversity of housing opportunities for, that are affordable to low, moderate, and middle-income households, such as working families, single parents, people with disabilities, homeless families, veterans, and recent college graduates. So Quincy Planning and Community Development has had the responsibility of developing our housing production plan. The last plan was approved and adopted by the city council in twenty-ten. So this is essentially a five-year update to that plan. We were fortunate to have enlisted the expertise of MAPC to provide technical assistance in crafting this plan. And the funding for that technical assistance was provided through a grant from the Affordable Housing Trust Committee as well as a state grant match. The plan commenced in twenty-fifteen when we undertook significant public outreach. We had community feedback for an online survey, a public visioning forum, and a public strategy forum. We also interviewed key stakeholders, including the Quincy Housing Authority, community... um, community development agencies, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, a commercial real estate broker and a planning group. The production plan was actually adopted by the planning board in May of 2016 and this year. Um, but as mentioned, it also must be adopted by the city council before final approval by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So, it's our hope that this plan, um, if approved, will serve as the impetus to explore and consider the strategies for.
Thank you. Don't, don't go anywhere, actually, sorry. I, I think Councilor Forrest had a quick question, I know this is going to committee, but Councilor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. I, um, represent the city council along with Councilwoman Ching, also been on the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. And, uh, Ramon is going to tell you, you've done great work at the committee since we've had you involved. One thing that's really jumped out at me that I wanted to just, correct question before this goes to committee, is it references that we're, that we should be working towards compliance with 40B? And I believe we are in compliance with 40B, because there's other criteria than this strict 10% threshold. Can you just talk about that? I just, when this document's up on the, on our website and accessible to the public, we've scheduled that meeting, I just think that, um, I don't want the impression that we're not in compliance and it's like the leading paragraph. So, if you could just clarify that before me, that's all I have. If you can look for and have questions in committee.
Sure. So, um, under chapter, general, uh, chapter 40B, there are actually three thresholds uh, in which a community meets, if it meets, is compliant with the law. Um, the one that is, um, I guess most noted is the 10% requirement. Uh, and what, so that statement is accurate, that the city is not compliant with the 10% threshold. Um, it's currently at 9.16%, but there are two other thresholds. If a community meets those thresholds, you will be in compliance. So, those other two thresholds, the first is the land area minimum, which essentially says that if 1.5% or more of your developable land and your community is dedicated to this type of housing, um, then you're compliant with chapter 40B. The other is the annual, annual land area minimum, which essentially says that if 0.03% of developable land in any one year is committed and is developed as affordable or workforce housing, then you meet that threshold. So, uh, a few years ago, the city asserted that, uh, we are compliant with the 1.5% threshold.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ching. Sure, thanks, I'll throw your work in. We've actually had long conversations about this offline, so I can better understand it. Um, just to follow up on what Councilor Forrest said. So, we're not in compliance with 40B. There's three check boxes that you can prevent a comprehensive permit from coming in the city that the city does not want, and we have one of the three boxes checked, right?
It's, it's not all three, it's any one of the three.
So, we're fine with 9, 9.16%? There's no threat that, uh, a 40B proposal, um, could be shoved down the city's throat?
The, my understanding is that the zoning board of appeals would have to deny the permit based, based on that, one, asserting that it meets the 1.5% threshold. Uh, but our calculations show that it does. And to clarify, a community does not need to meet all three, just one of the three.
Okay. Um, what, and I just want to, I try and says, whenever we discuss affordable housing, I think it's worth noting that affordable doesn't mean poor, it just means affordable.
Correct.
We're not talking about sectioning, we're not talking about, um, you know, public housing for people who have no money. We're just talking about regular people who are like, it's what, 80% of the median?
Correct, there is a, a state formula or definition for what an affordable housing unit constitutes. And just for sake of example, um, under the state definition, it is a household earning 80% or less than the area median income.
Which is what, $61,000 generally?
It is about $61,000. Um, I'm sorry, for one person, it's $51,150.
That's the, uh, median or that's?
That's, that's the 80% for one person household. And I was actually today just looking at the Massachusetts, um, uh, workforce statistics database, and it provides median and, and average incomes for Greater Boston workers. And you can see the occupation types that essentially would qualify for.
Yeah, we're talking teachers, police, firefighters, uh, people who work in the planning department, maybe, I don't know. But, uh, we're talking about folks who make the city, who work in the city, who make the city better. We're talking about the middle class. So, I just think it's not, it's important to mention, whenever we're talking about affordable housing, we're not talking about housing for the poor. It includes that, but, but it goes way up, the, 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 uh, the classification goes way up. We're talking about the middle class. And as we see, uh, prices in our city skyrocket, you know, the appreciation, the, uh, single family home of young couples starting out, uh, you know, trying to raise a, uh, family in Quincy, born, you know, maybe they're born and raised in Quincy, or they're from somewhere else, they want to come, they want to start a family in Quincy. We're talking about the affordability of them being able to do so. Uh, the folks who built Quincy, who made Quincy, uh, as great as it is today. We're talking about being able to, to maintain housing that they can afford, that middle class people, that firefighters, teachers and, and police officers and those kind of folks can afford and to raise a family. So, um, I'm, I'm interested if we get into this, um, more too, to talk about the productivity of our fund, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is really such a big part of how we, as a city, um, address affordable housing. You know, when, when folks have these developments, they, they can buy into the fund. I'm saying, you know, but they, they can buy into the fund. And we've had that for quite some time. Then Councilor Finn was a part of that measure, uh, that came into the city council. So, it's probably, uh, at the oldest possibly, uh, a decade or so. I think it's time to reexamine that, to see whether or not, uh, to see whether or not that still makes sense, whether or not we, as a city, can maintain a fund and match the development of affordable housing, creation of affordable housing, um, with that fund. Because I don't know that we're spending it out in a reasonable way, and I, I don't know one way or the other. If we're spending it out and creating affordable housing, um, to meet the demand that's out there and also to, uh, on an equal basis as it's coming in, especially with this boom, I mean, it's the cycle's booming in Boston. There's quite a bit of dough in that fund right now, right?
No. Not currently, but, uh, we will be coming into.
Or there's, there's a host of payments due to that.
Correct.
Right. And I know that a lot of, a lot of good organizations have, have made use of that fund. I know the Veterans Home that was created, um, I know labor workers does, does a tremendous job, you know, in the past, G Cap, I think has tapped that fund. So, um, all great community partners that are creating affordable, um, housing that we so, I think desperately need in the city to, to, to maintain, uh, the character of our city. So, thank you for getting into it. Okay. Commissioner Hughes, can you turn to you up a little bit? You should.
No, 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 all right. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Rob, appreciate the presentation and look forward to discussing this more in committee. Uh, next item, Madam President.
Then for the agenda, 2016, 227, that the city clerk be hereby directed to notify voters of the city of Quincy, members of the Democratic and Republican voting group, and act, motioned by, early voting.
Early, great, uh, so, did you want to sit on that matter?
Sure, I would love to.
Great.
Okay, so, uh, the city of Quincy has been mandated to hold early voting. We will designate 1305, Camp Rock Street, Monday through Friday, from October 24th through October 28th and October 31st through November 4th, in one Saturday, at North Quincy High School, from 8:30 to 5:00. We will put all this information up on our website for everybody to see. And we will have, um, ads in the Patriot Ledger and the Quincy Sun and Sing Tao Newspaper. It's dubbed October 24th and it goes through November 4th.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to pass?
What motion?
Motion by Councilor Forrest, second by Councilor Harris. Anyone wishing to speak on the motion?
Of course, Councilor Ching.
It's the heat, it's getting to us.
Perhaps for you to, uh, to the clerk, um, she knows the questions I wanted to ask, I've asked privately. But, um, what, what was the impetus to choosing North Quincy High School as the location? Uh, and Quincy City Hall as a location, the only locations in the city that we were going to be voting against?
Um, the train stations were a big factor here. And we thought that, um, we're going to do our best to get everybody, um, a chance to vote early voting if they wish, Monday, um, 8:30 to 7:00 PM. And then Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we're going to do 8:30 to 5:00 PM. And at North Quincy High School on that Saturday, we're going to do 8:30 to 5:00.
And moving forward, this is, would you call this a test at this point? Or are we mandated to have some form of early voting, but we're not mandated to have this form of early voting, right?
That's right.
I mean, it's local municipalities, or, I don't even think it's municipalities, but the election board, local election board?
Yep, Board of Registars.
Board of Registars will determine in the future where we'll have it, what the hours will be in trying to make the most sense of, or what makes the most sense to do it, right?
That's right.
And this is the only vote that this city council takes in terms of, of this issue, right?
Yes.
At some point, we have to vote to pay for it?
Um, we, we are getting some federal funding. Um, we are getting that Saturday at 8:00. And, um, we'll, we'll always work to try to get some more. And we did allow for some early voting in our budget.
Yeah, because we knew it was coming. And this is state law that mandates the city to have early voting in federal elections?
Yes.
Okay, doesn't count on state, and it doesn't count on city, or it doesn't apply to, right?
True.
Uh, and this was something the state legislature passed?
Yes.
There's no additional funded, funding provided from the state legislature to fund this in the cities and towns?
Not at first, but they are going back and looking at it.
And, um, as a city clerk, what role do you play in the Board of Registars?
I am the chairperson. And, um, we have met, we met on election day, last week, and, um, we went over the voting hours. And, um, we're going to designate parking here, we're going to designate a parking spot here. And there'll be plenty of parking at the Saturday side as well.
I, um, moving forward, and we're asking that are addressed to the entire board, at least to you as chairman. Moving forward, I'd be interested in seeing, um, not necessarily a change in locations, I don't know if those are the best or the worst locations, but I'd be interested in seeing, um, some thought you put into, um, not just train stations, but where we have folks who are, you know, who are seniors, you know, who would be easier to vote if they could have different hours. You know, maybe, um, uh, it comes to mind Germantown and Lewis Corn, folks where, places where folks, um, have a lower propensity of voting, you have more, you know, single mothers working, more single parent households, um, lower wage earners in those neighborhoods. I wonder if there isn't, uh, I mean, I'm sure anyone can pick out 20 different reasons why it should be here or there. But, you know, I, to me, this is an opportunity in a way to test out, um, some different approaches to how we can increase voter turnout to perhaps our, uh, underrepresented, underrepresented, um, areas, either demographically, ethnically or, or geographically in the city. So, I, I'd be interested in moving forward and how, to the extent that I'm here, when this comes up again, and we ask, uh, those same questions as to, you know, okay, so we've done it once before, other communities have done it, why are we doing it here and how can we perhaps better do it in the future somewhere else to, to perhaps touch upon, as I said, some other demographic? The, um, the city isn't contemplating this, right? I mean, you're, the board isn't contemplating this for municipal or the state, or, I know it's not mandated, but I'm.
Not at this time. And we will analyze the votes once, um, early voting is over and once the election's over, we'll go back and look to see.
What effect it had.
What effect it had if, if we thought that, you know, what, or had a huge response, then perhaps we can get building in the high school or one or the other, you know, that will hold things as to.
Right, and I don't see this as a, right, from a territorial perspective, I just think there's a lot of different ways we could approach this. So, it looks like this year the board decided approaching around T-stations. Okay, that, it seems reasonable to me, let's see how that works and see if other communities, you know, Lowell Lawrence, Brockton, New Bedford, wherever, if they don't do it in a different way, maybe towards senior citizens or towards, um, you know, economically, uh, uh, lower income scale neighborhoods. So, I, I just think it's an opportunity to, to look at this and, um, you know, I, I've, this law, I, I have mixed feelings about this law. I think it's great to encourage more folks to vote and to open up participation. But, um, you know, this to me is an unfunded mandate from the state so far. Um, when the city of Quincy has long gone above and beyond access to voting. So, maybe there were other communities that didn't have nearly as good of track record as Quincy, but under your predecessor and your work too, in that office, uh, I never saw anyone who went in there. I mean, you guys had a ballot booth set up weeks ahead of every election, set up in the office. Someone come in and said, "Oh gee, I'm flying, I'm flying to Europe tonight, uh, leaving in an hour, I just realized that I'm not going to be here to vote." You'd hand them an absentee ballot, they could vote. We had early voting. And it's my understanding that no one ever was questioned whether or not their, um, request to vote early for an absentee ballot, they would never challenge on whether or not that request was good enough or if it met, you know, the specific criteria that they had been spelled out. It was, okay, you want an absentee ballot, you can vote right here, we count your vote. We've had early voting, uh, we've had it for a long time in the city of Quincy. Other municipalities maybe haven't. So, this is a little frustrating to me that we get this unfunded mandate, that now we have to do it differently. We have to do it, uh, in a way that the state dictates, rather than the way we've been very successfully doing it for a long, long time. So, I know it's just all, still coming into the, the newness of the job, you do a terrific job. And I know, um, in the last election, you and your team did a terrific job. I trust, uh, it'll be just as smooth in the, in the presidential. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to, uh, commend, uh, the clerk and the elections office, uh, for, uh, working through this. I know that there are a lot of communities, there's a lot of confusion. And I think Councilor Ching talked about sort of the unfunded mandate, this was something the legislature handed. I think there are a lot of problems with early voting, um, in, in, in general, a lot more, um, uh, a lot more room for error, for fraud, for, for things that, uh, possibly could go wrong. So, um, so it is something, you know, that, that we'll have to watch. But I do commend, uh, the clerk and, again, the elections division at, uh, putting together such a comprehensive plan and really including, um, I guess I know, um, Chris, so included, uh, a lot of different groups in terms of talking about everyone's comfort level with, uh, with early voting here in Quincy. So, um, I want to thank you and your team and, um, and Councilor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, just a quick question, um, through to the clerk. Um, after Cameron Locke, the first voter turnout, I'm sure in RSC's history, I'm just curious, what are we anticipating for turnout in November? And is this because we're trying to accommodate the voters at the moment? There, is the anticipation is going to be a huge turnout this year? And this is to help offset that, so we're not having a lot of, well, just wanted to talk about what you're anticipating as a turnout?
Voter turnout of about 70 to 75%. So, for that, we're happy to advertise this early voting and get people out early. We're, we're looking forward to commanding the poll and, you know, we're going to extend the hours, do what we can to, to alleviate election day.
Yeah, no, I, uh, I appreciate the work that you do. I have, uh, I've been to your office and I have to do that to my college students. So, you know, I appreciate you are also, you're also, I do, and the council, so you're doing a good job in making that, those opportunities available, but in the communications and the level of, um, you know, how you are achieving this, like, the presidential, yeah, to keep, to create those opportunities. So, thank you.
And you have to vote twice this year, so that's.
Three times. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just want to, um, feed that a little bit and just say, um, the fact that we're, and commend, uh, the clerk's office. Because remember, uh, when we. the fact that we're, you men, the clerk's office, because remember, when we vote each year, I mean, each time, we're interrupting folks, you know, most of the places, the schools. And now, if we can, and it's a great idea, and I think it's a great concept, that if there's gonna be this big of a turnout, think about the disruption that takes place every time we have an election, and every time, you know, there are schools in, in session. So the fact on a Saturday, we have at North Quincy, which is, I think, via a train station, which can house everybody. I just said, I think it's a great idea, great concept, and appreciate everything you're doing. That, people don't realize what a disruption, especially having brought up a couple of kids and that Swan School alone. And it really does make a difference because there's really no place to park. And voter turnout is as big as we think it's gonna be, it could get over higher than that, if you think about it. And it's, I applaud, applaud what you folks have done. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so there is a motion, oh, Councilwoman.
Madam President, thank you very much. Just to elaborate a little bit on Councilwoman Harris, as Ted's spoken about, and I know this kind of pertains to presidential election for the early voting, but on November 8th is the final voting. I did get a few complaints about security reasons over at some of the schools during these elections. Can you, do you have any information about that?
I do. Could you tell the schools that are closed on that day, or a professional ministry day, the teachers will be?
So the folk, all schools will be down, you know, from school. Now, just, just a step further with that, you know, it's been, especially Swan School, what Councilwoman Harris represents, I think do get a ton of complaints from some of the parents, just, they just want a little bit more security. Is there, looking forward, is there anything that we can do on a city standpoint? I know we've allocated a certain amount of funding for this, but maybe around the schools, can we, can we hire another police officer? Or is there anything that we're looking at? Or what do we have in place right now?
I'm actually leading with the traffic department, Thursday or Friday of this week. And we're gonna go over some of the areas that have concern, the walls, the school, Longfellow School, Quincy Center, Career Center there. We're gonna go over those concerns. We're gonna sit down and try to make some new changes.
So parking's also an issue, because you're allowing to, during peak times or during the afternoon hours, at lunchtime, after work, there's a lot of times where they can't find that parking spot. It's making it even harder for them to get into a facility to, to vote. But I, I think we, to look forward, we really have to take a good look at these schools and while they're operating. And some, like, each of them all is like a, a double precinct. Swan School's one of the highest precincts. So there's a lot of frequency of people coming in and out during the school hours. And I think, I think if we look a little forward with, with maintaining a good security, won't have a lot of complaints as well. Do you think that's something I'll do?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Harris, I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Harris, please.
Just, just, thank you, Councilwoman Forrest. Just to realize that, remember, my, my children are full grown, and I didn't realize that, shame on me that I didn't realize that the schools were closed that day was a great thing. But we can't do it for the other, for the other days. And, you know, again, again, when we move forward with elections that are coming up, we have to really be mindful of that in, in the future. And again, I appreciate everything that works on. And it's a great idea that the schools were closed that day. And that's, that's fantastic. So, and except for the poor folks that, you know, have daycare and things like that, that they have to deal with. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Some motions made by Councilwoman Forrest, seconded by Councilwoman Harris. Madam President, call the board.
Councilwoman Kroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Finn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liang?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda number five, 2016-23.
We have the reading.
Motion for the reading.
Single letter, please.
All right. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Kroll, seconded by Councilor Ivana on the motion.
Councilwoman Kroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Finn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Forrest?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liang?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Next on the agenda number six, 2016-23.
We have the reading, single letter, thank you.
Motion approved by Councilwoman Kroll, seconded by Councilwoman Kevanna on the motion.
Councilwoman Kroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Finn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liang?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. Next, that ends our agenda for this evening, but we will move to approval of previous meeting minutes, our September 12th minutes. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Forrest, seconded by Councilwoman Harris on the motion. Madam President, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those hands? Okay, great, you guys have it. Minutes are approved. Communications and reports to the mayor, to the officers and city for all boards. Madam President.
I do have a communication for one new traffic to refer to ordinance committee to advertising, Ward 5, at Camp Rock, at 30th and Front Street.
Okay, for ordinance for advertising. Thank you. Unfinished business from the preceding meeting, anything on the table now. Reports of committees, presentation of petitions and memorials are on the long strings. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Scheduling of committee meetings or public hearings. Yes, Councilwoman Forrest.
So just, just because of the follow-up commission of chair leading here tonight, we have going to be scheduling Commissioner Duke out of foreign language matter to come in for the next full conference meeting. So we're beginning for our next meeting.
Oh, perfect. All right. Thank you. All right. So we did that. And just a reminder, our next council meeting is, yes, that's okay, Councilwoman Kroll.
Going through my calendar. I know the third, what is the following to council meeting after that, October 17th, the block's over? Because I know that there's half that Jim, and I see you up there in chief seats, the MTC, is that John going to be available on the 17th? Should you pencil that meeting in?
Yes.
Yes.
Whenever you can have, I'll be.
Okay. All right.
I guess if you can come in, we probably have to come in. And then if we ran, we could.
Okay, on the 17th. Okay. Is that where, oh, we already told the 11th. Okay. Okay, so 6:30, housing.
And then the matter that Commissioner Irwin wanted to have before us.
Change.
Take that out of committee on the 3rd for presentation.
Okay. Wait, so, so you want us to put it on the agenda?
We could, but it's meant to be committees.
Okay. Yeah, we can always say that when you put it on the agenda.
Because I know that he had expressed, if it was something that the council was comfortable on the way forward, I believe the application hard stopped his, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kroll. All right, so just a couple of reminders, as we spoke about Monday, October 3rd, 6:30 is our next time we will meet. That will be an education committee meeting at 6:30, followed by overhearing at 7:25, followed by our regular council meeting at 7:30. So stay tuned. Our finance committee meeting, for those of you at home, regarding the Sterling Middle School, will take place at the Sterling Middle School, we're taking it on the road, at 6:30 at the Sterling Middle School, Thursday, September 29th. And something near and dear to my heart, just as a reminder for everyone, the 19th Annual Peachtree National Fall Festival, Saturday, October 1st, from 11:04. Great opportunity, everybody's coming to the school and get together, meet the neighbors, see the kids, and lots of activities there. So that will be happening before we meet next time. So just wanted to remind folks of that. And anything else, you can go to the auditor. Now, okay, motion returned by Councilwoman Harris, seconded by Councilwoman Liang. All those in favor? Aye, yea, motion have it. All right, thank you very much, everyone.